Okay. So I'll dive in. It's May the 24th, this is GPOS and Upper Crow Creek Association Special Meeting, first one. Probably first one. Just go through some, so importantly first, GROV Board supervises its committees and subcommittees are subject to the Alaska Meetings Act as found in Alaska Statute 44.62.310, Bank Ridge Municipal Code 1.25, Public Meetings. GROV Board Supervisors operates under GROV Public Meeting standards and conduct. We're called meeting to order at 12:15. Apologies for the, for the technical difficulties that led to a late start. Start with a roll call for GPOS members. My name is Mike Edgington, Co-Chair and, and Supervisor. And we have.
Jennifer Wingard, Utility Supervisor.
And online, who's on there from the board?
This is Brianna Sullivan, Co-Chair and Parks and Recreation Cemetery Supervisor.
Excellent. Any disclosures for anybody?
I think Amanda's online.
Yep.
Sorry.
It's okay. This is Amanda Sassy, the Public Safety Supervisor, I'm on the phone.
Amanda, sorry, I didn't recognize your number.
No worries.
We do have a forum. I'll ask other people in the room to introduce themselves.
My name is Emma Kramer, I'm a GROV resident and current president of the Upper Crow Creek Community Association.
Matt Harrison, Gerwood resident and resident Upper Crow Creek also.
Celita Rios, also Upper Creek Association resident and board member.
Thank you, Upper Crow Creek All Stars.
Take it.
Do you want to, we have a couple of members of the public, do you want to introduce yourselves as well? No, that's fine. And best star. Okay. Gender revisions and approval, we have two items on the agenda. I don't even like to do approval or anything.
This is Brianna, I move to approve the agenda as written.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any amendments or other items anybody wants to add? Or amendments to the public, to the, or anything else?
I think the one other item we did want to bring up for the agenda is, together with GPOS, UCA would like to write a letter to the state to sort of request extra funds for the road, or at least request some part of look at the road.
Sure, that makes sense. We can either do that under one or do it separately.
Sounds good.
Let's just, let's treat that as something else we do under one. Okay. So, looks like, so if we take the agenda as is, will present any objection? Okay, so announcements, public is encouraged to ask questions, provide comment, please raise your hand if made to be acknowledged. Public production, help discussion, stay productive, please direct your comments to the board or other members of the public. Please be respectful of everyone's opinions. I'm going to go straight into the agenda. So, item number one, Crow Creek Road, Winter Trail, Winter Creek Trail Bridge, Winter Road Service. So let's start with the, we start with the bridge first, where that stands, Winter Creek Trail and the bridge.
At this point in time, the tram will be closed this winter and our summer, basically, tram is done. And we are working with, we have funds for a design of a suspension bridge to replace the hand tram. And, and go out there and state, just awarded a grant for 1.2 million for a suspension bridge to be built out there as part of the long trail development. There's $14 million given to the long trail development and part of that funding was for the suspension bridge. So, we are currently working through the design process to come up with a full design build out bid package with the hopes of constructing in '23 if everything goes right. And we're working with the Forest Service in partnership on that. So that's basically where we stand at this point.
Do we, do you think that's, the impact that's going to have on traffic on Crow Creek, at least up to the trail? When the suspension bridge gets built?
Well, I think we'll see traffic return to Crow Creek Road, whereas with the, the bridge or the suspension, with the hand tram being closed for the last two years, things have probably slowed down up there, was the trailhead? No, people are still going out there? So probably continue then up there and probably be an increase in, in traffic up there.
Also for services this winter when there was, you know, five plus cars car in the road, right? With no ticket market.
What's it been like, what's it like last summer and the previous summer when the hand trams were closed? Because I know there's been general.
Not even noticeable difference because I, because people will go down, it's easy, you have to hike two where it's fair unless and then just hike back here. So that's, and it is a fairly easy trail. And so, I mean, there are times when that parking lot is completely full and people park on the road and still people. So it really, you didn't notice any sort of decrease in people, if anything, an increase. Because also people go all the way up to the Crow Pass trailhead too and stop there along the way. People just go up to drive and stop there or whatever, so it's.
Crow Pass trail has been so busy that it fills the parking lot and starts to go down the road, which is a very narrow road. We've seen that many times last year. So I, I think, you know, it's not necessarily COVID related, but with more time for recreating, I feel like we saw a big bump then. And even before that, I just think, you know, Gerwood Recreation was building and on weekends when the municipality folks would want to drive somewhere, you can tell like the Saturday or Sunday, it, it's slowed. So despite the hand tram really, I would say the overall traffic has increased.
So probably all the movements anyway, but when we, when we have a bridge back, in my sense is when there's a bridge, it's going to receive further.
Yep. Yep, and you know, I feel like the parts that we feel like we want to speak to are mostly in the winter. Obviously, it just, with more traffic on the road and with unprepared drivers, it's a constant struggle. And so, that was really why we were like, oh wow, if it's a, if it's a more legitimate bridge, there's people who are going to want to cross it almost any time of the year. And so we're curious as to how it could be closed. We also had discussions about, did we want to request that the Forest Service plow that parking lot? Because it happens to be on one of the narrowest part of the roads. So irregardless of what we try to close, if it is closed, people park on the road. I don't think we came to any conclusions, but it draws people and when that parking lot is full, meaning, you know, there's no road service till May. So people start to travel there in April, or March, let me say March. March and April are very busy for hand tram.
But even following along, because then people come always, they did with the ski or snowshoe or whatever along the trail too, so.
And is the idea by the suspension bridge to, to close it at a certain point in the season? Or that, so historically the hand tram is kind of seasonal, whereas now this will draw more winter users to that area?
Correct. It, it's meant to be designed so it can hold winter load, no problem, and people could still cross it safely. And, and minimize us having to do special maintenance on it, which tends to usually cause issues when you do that. Like the hand tram shutting it down was always hard on the system when it's not being used, so.
So that, that obviously brings on other large user groups that store it.
Yeah, one of the great areas that really affects us is that Crow Pass is not closed in the winter. Obviously that's not in our control. I understand that's the way the state does it. So if it becomes the same, the pinch of the new bridge not being closed, I think that the current dynamic of us paying for recreators will no longer function. Right now, we're letting it kind of go.
Yeah, and it's so far, I mean, it's, it's at a, not necessarily a huge hazardous level of traffic now. It's inconvenient, there have been, you know, numerous accidents. I myself was involved in head-on collision last year with a college student coming back from skiing at the top of the road around one of the really narrow, narrow bend corners. And they came around at 35, 40 sideways, we had time to stop our vehicle. Ran into us, we had a one-year-old in the car. Goodness, we could see bells and everything, but you know, encouraging people, basically, to come up there in the winter, that is going to get them efficient.
Actually, like, wriggles, truckless, total when I was driving, just the exact same thing, people coming down. And also this year, one of the reasons I feel like we didn't have as many incidents this year is that it, it just depends on the road conditions. And when it gets to, when it warms up a little bit and there's snow on the road and then it rains on it and then it gets cold again, it is like an icy blue stretch from top to bottom. And if you don't know what you're doing, if you don't have chains, if you don't know how to drive, how to pull over, it's, you know, I mean, I feel like with more, with increased traffic, it's only a matter of time before somebody really gets, you know.
I also had a head-on collision in the same spot as Matt did, but my kids were in car seats, so it was easily 15 years ago. And the two young women who hit us, very apologetic, they were snow shoeing and the people at the sorrows sent to go Crow Creek. And it was February, so it's sort of, you know, that was 15 years ago. And it only takes one out of 20 drivers to be the wrong one. That's in the same spot where Matt got hit. So, on the flip side, we could start to mitigate the certain spots on the road and do a lot of signage. And we could activate ourselves in that way. But we're also sort of like, there's these users, user groups that aren't paying their fair share. And so that's, that's why we wanted to speak up, so thanks for the speaking.
Uh, through the chair, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think Guy's still trying to join and he'd, he'd really benefit from hearing all of this.
Sure, thank you.
Sorry.
I probably, I missed him here.
He just, I was not sure if I just couldn't keep him on the list. Thank you, everyone.
Welcome, welcome Guy, sorry about the, sorry about the extra time in the lobby there. The discussion is around, the discussion is around the Crow Creek Road, particularly winter conditions. And when we have the new suspension bridge, it will effectively be open in winter as well. The, they've seen a lot, the residents in Crow Creek have seen the traffic didn't really decrease while the tram was closed. So when something reopens, it will probably lead to a significant increase. That's the assumption now. It's a quick, a very, very quick summary here, but the whole thing is recorded, so you can go back and listen if you.
No, appreciate that, Mike.
And one of the things that has come up internally with us, and you know, I've chatted with several people, you know, T and D. And they used to have said, oh, you know, don't, don't worry about it. But one of the things I deal with is a sort of a liability. And I'm always just curious as to if we are maintaining a public road, but what level of liability are we, you know, bringing ourselves up to? Somebody is actually injured, they say, well, why didn't you gravel? Why didn't you plow today? So that's, you know, dressed internally.
There was a question I was going to actually ask you, so I know I've had this discussion with them before. So the way that this is done in the majority of municipality is you form a limited road service area. So it would be the same sort of thing, we collect money from residents, but it'd be done through a tax system. So you would be personally collecting it, it would be the government collecting it, and then be about the board who spends it on the road. And that way it kind of, it actually means because you'd be part of government, you would have the same liability issues, supply of organization. And it means you would be responsible for the money collecting side, you'd be done with the government process. And that's, that's another way to think.
We have discussed that and it didn't really seem like it.
It doesn't seem to apply, Crow Creek is unique as both any other Lursa. The rural, the Lursa, that, that sort of piqued our interest a little more to where we considered, I've considered seeking some legal counsel to understand if that fit us better, but the Lursa doesn't, doesn't fit for Crow Creek.
Yeah, I feel it would be a rural Lursa.
Yeah, right.
And then it's the government that decides the mil rates and also.
Well, you decide how much you need to collect and then the government does, you do that.
Based on the assessments of your properties.
I guess in, in certain ways that, what that helps with is the removal and the collection, the removal of snow and the collection of money. Those are sort of the easiest parts of.
The collection of money, you still have to.
Yeah, the collection of money is not so hard. Plowing the road is not so hard. Dealing with unprepared drivers is actually our biggest challenge.
And, and the other aspects is like, if you're through the other gates, T, you'd have that.
Yes, this is true.
Yeah.
The other, the other thing, I think one of our issues is with turning that control over to like, like a government agency. You know, we have like a group tax should be plowed today, do we need gravel, what do we need? Because we're driving up and down the road. And so there might be days where the weather is completely different down the road than it is up at Crow Creek. And so for us to be able to make those decisions is really important. It is sort of nerve-wracking to think of somebody not understanding what those road conditions are.
I don't think that's unusual. Like on the hillside, it's full of rural service areas and they're run by board members who are resident members. So they make the call to the contractor. So in this case, you would hire a contractor through a bid process. So you would know how much the hourly rates are and everything, you'd probably get the lowest bid on it. And then somebody from up there can be, in this case, before I was here, you know, John Gallup, Jim Henderson, many other people made the call and they're just board members of GPOS.
It still seems like that doesn't touch on the issue that we have. It, it helps with liability, but also I could wonder if a large umbrella policy would cover us to where we still have control. And then when it comes to having the municipality tax us, one of the things we, we were talking amongst ourselves is that right now it's equitable. It's per house, but when we start to do it per square footage, there's a lot of different homes up there. And so it does not stay equal anymore. And so that was one of the other disadvantages I thought. And I, I feel like the recreational traffic being, I could just throw a number out, two-thirds of the number of our residential traffic, that's the issue. And none of us want to stop that because we are all here because we love recreating in the Guro Valley. I think that's more of the drive to wonder, are we doing this the best way for everybody in the community? As opposed to just like, we're tired of collecting money and calling it blah blah. We're doing okay with that.
Yeah, I think we're all starting to kind of, we like status quo, we're just retaliating system, what I like. GPOS really gives a lot of it's looking to do to help the increased traffic.
The way, the way the assessments were, the way the charges were, would be based on the assessed amount. So if you had a high assessment, you have a big property, lots of land, then you'd end up paying more, you know, flats are very low. But it would include land ownership if they don't have. So they would obviously be paying. Things seem to put two-thirds of the taxes that get paid off by people, they're going to learn that by secondhand.
Yeah, and I think that's what we like currently is that you have a car, so that's like that is another way of sure people stop you on the road.
I, I think we have some of the same frustrations here in the sense that we have, you know, a large visitor industry in the valley and we don't collect any money on that. I've expressed this to GPOS, you know, it's like, we need a tax in some sort that, because we have capital demands here that are growing as the curb and gutter and straglocks come in, well, that's going to age out, we're going to need to replace that. And all that burden comes back on the property taxpayers to do that. And we have people who are visiting, you know, going out to Alieska Hotel and using our infrastructure. And we're not collecting any money from them when they're here. And I think that's a, the, the structure of the municipality in the sense that it, the burden mostly falls on taxpayers to pay for the essential services, property owners in, in general, is, is a, is a big challenge. There is a bed tax within Gerwood, but that goes back to like funding area-wide tax or area-wide services, like the dog catcher library, EMS, the convention center downtown. And then there's one other one, oh, the tourism fund, which basically promotes tourism in Crankridge. And so we would rather see a portion of that money come back to Gerwood to help with our capital funds. But we are cognizant that it does fund the library and EMS and then all the striping and signing and all these small things that we don't think about, the dog catcher, things like that. So that, that burden isn't on the taxpayer. So the hard part is capturing that money of those recreational people going up and down. Where basically what you, you almost need is a toll booth that you charge people.
Oh, can we put a toll booth later? Okay, yeah, all right, that's maybe your turn, maybe your turn.
But the, the other complication is that the only section of road up there that is under municipal right-of-way is the neighborhood. And you have DOT from Alieska Highway up till there. And then after that, I think it basically becomes Forest Service and there. So you have three different owners in the section and your smallest section is actually your neighborhood. And the longest section is DOT and DOT owns it. And they've basically given the status of that road as like a tier three, which is lowest priority.
Is there, is there a, would you petition to change that status?
Is that clear that DOT do have responsibility for that road? So I thought they would say.
There's a legal opinion written that it was a DOT.
Oh, okay, I didn't know.
It was a farm-to-market road, basically a mine-to-market road. DOT was definitely recognized.
They have responsibility from the junction with Alieska Highway all the way to the beginning of the neighborhood.
They have ownership. So now what level of responsibility is, is for maintenance and things like that, that's within their discretion. So they do like a tier, I think it's even still a tier three or tier two program after all the cuts a few years ago. And some roads got green, some roads have yellows, some have red. And I think that road is a red, as you can tell in the winter, because they don't plow it very often. Until it becomes a real problem and they finally go and plow it.
I mean, it's, it's bad now.
Yeah, but just the paved section in the winter, it's like, you go back there, you're like.
So if the, the status of the DOT is kind of like as low as it could be, what are some of the things that would inspire them to raise it? Would it be for the Forest Service to say, hey, can we put a ticker on the road and show how many people are traveling in it? Or is it, in your, in your knowledge, is there anything that could make them raise the priority level?
Your representatives pushing it, administration pushing it.
And so if we wanted to kind of construct a letter that said, hey, after those last floods, the road took a lot of, you know, washout and we have so much more, would that just mean, you know, one-time hope for a little extra funding for DMS, which is still a wonderful?
Yeah, and you know, and it seems like over the last couple of years, they've been responsive to, like, there's been culverts that totally have gone bad. You know, I talked to the superintendent down here and, and he's always bound by funding and personnel. And I actually just left a message to them, I'm surprised I haven't heard back from them, they may be out, but usually calls him back. Because I got a phone, phone call from Crow Creek Mine and they're asking, what do you know? And I said, well, I'll give a call and find out for you.
It's usually about the real thing.
Yeah, usually they're up there and I do, we were just up there dealing with a homeless situation. And, and so we were just, I was just commenting to, what do you please? I was like, actually this is taken care of, you know, like the frost teeth are gone now and they've melted out, but you know.
We talked with them a little bit, they were waiting for it to harden, shoulders to.
Yeah, and so I saw the shoulder damage coming back down, things like that.
Last, last fall was.
Yep.
Yeah, you guys are saying, oh, you and who?
Yep.
Big pickaxe, isn't it?
Yeah, exactly. And so, so yeah, I'm surprised they haven't been up there yet. Usually they get up there and get it done, so.
Is there any possibility of plowing that, the, just, you know, related to the bridge excess traffic? Getting that funding to plow that parking lot?
That parking lot? I think that's worth a letter to the Forest Service. I think it's good to engage them in that conversation because they're, they're wholly responsible. That's why basically what's happened is, is that we've heard solid demand from the community to put that link back in the trail. People want it back. And so when I talk to the Forest Service, they're saying five to 10 years if you're lucky. And so we've taken on the initiative to find funds to make this work. And then the reason we have them partnering with us is that we're going to hand them the bridge and give it to them for perpetuity. Because they basically take care of everything right up to the bridge. That's why the trail is so good and that's why the hand tram became outgrown is because now everybody can get to that hand tram just like that. It used to be a mud hole back in there. And so, so yeah, they understand that they've taken on the responsibility for the didgeridoo, long trail, this portion. And so I think it's worth writing to them and saying, you know, you guys need to step up and help us maintain this because it's going to be year-round, year-round traction.
So that would be more of a Forest Service that.
Yeah, and I think there's room for expansion in that parking lot as well. You know, that upper tier was never fully developed out. And so I think that could be better organized up there so that there's more parking, diagonal parking in that parking lot, so.
And it's a completely separate subject, but the same old is true in the actual neighborhood itself, where there is no public parking in the winter time. But the, the amount of back which you skier sets easily quadruple on more.
Yeah.
Just be that no one would take a right, they would all go to the turning pass and that was a significant amount that country skier took. A little parking again. And also, you know, at, at times, we, we, we're okay with a certain level of road maintenance, but there's also no, in a way that PMS can respond to.
You know, and it's all in a unique place.
The problem you have is very similar to their brother, say, in the South Park, but on the hillside. I have very similar problems, if they have a lot of people traveling, sort of recreating in Chugan State Park. And they're traveling all these roads and they're parking at the ends and everything else. So this problem is kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it heals well.
Yeah.
In terms of some access, winter access, so. There's, there's, you know, there's things that, there's definitely a ground swell of problems and not very many solutions yet. But it's a, it's a broad conversation.
Yeah, you know, I think if, if that bridge reopens, I know, I talked to Glacier Valley Transit and they said they would want to run that bus route again, which would really help with the round trip. That'd be really important about getting the road maintained so that we could do that, that aspect.
That would be a nice service.
You know, for funding and like for your guys' area, you know, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but when Di Powers was up there, she came and, and basically was asking for money to improve the subdivision. And we were able to retain like a $600,000 grant. But then when it came to implementing, we needed some sort of maintenance agreement from UCA to make it happen. And basically there was no agreement that came out. And so we gave that money, which was extremely hard for me because it was like $600,000 we had to give back to the feds. And it was basically associated because you guys were through an access area to federal lands. So there could have been improvements done through there.
I think so. Wasn't the area that we needed improvements?
Yeah, that was the hard, that was the hardest.
It was good enough because, just because the specifics of it, I mean, we went back and forth with it and looked at all the details with it.
Because it would have been treated and shit and things like that.
It would have brought us to a status level that didn't need to be at a, to maintain. Also, we couldn't agree on it, but would have cut a lot of people's yards, yards.
There right away.
It would have been.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think guys, if you guys are looking for funding, I think it has to be really clear as to what UCA wants.
It's going to be, you know, definitely geared towards, I think, winter.
It's not even as if we're looking for funding. We, we are sustainable within ourselves. What, what we're now taxing is our goodwill, our good Samaritan-ness. How many people are we driving by? How many times do we stop and pull them out? Are we polite when we say, did you see the road sign we put up that said, be prepared, chains, whatever it all said? So the funds, us, you know, to make it, but I think we're, we're trying. And this year we talked about putting a public service on us, MKUL. So we're just trying to get some more awareness out, have people to have their own sense of responsibility and diligence, but.
I think the signage you put up was real effective. I mean, the one that was above the road definitely delivered a, a crossbones, skull and cusk bones helped too, but, but no, I understand what you're saying there.
And then just mainly with the bridge and, you know, encouraging more people. It's the summer, we've, I mean, we have drawn a line with our UCA's that we are a winter, that's how our organization is. And so that's kind of the, the start of this, okay? If there's going to be significant, more people coming from the, on the work, coming up Crow Creek or along that.
Is there a summer maintenance you do at all, if there's any, even in the neighborhood itself?
We do, uh, getting drainage.
Yeah, we get the minimum permit you need to do like gravel, gray, cut elders. I think the only thing we did once was replacing a culvert last year. That wasn't sort of large, just infrastructure, otherwise it's just trimming elders.
I could go to the teams just in case somebody has that, oh yes, surely they'll say. Just go to the safety. Make sure everyone feels included. So what I'm, I'm going to try and summarize where I've been. So what I'm hearing is traffic didn't decrease during the, during this COVID while the tram's been closed. So we probably do expect traffic to increase when it comes, when it comes to Crow Creek. Some of the maintenance is done by DOT at least as far as up to the neighborhood, but there's no winter maintenance.
Do they sometimes come through the neighborhood?
Very, very rarely, I think. When they do, it's just purely out of goodwill.
Okay, so it's primarily, it's winter maintenance done purely by UCA. The Forest Service can definitely help in terms of advocacy. I don't know if they can provide funding, but they can definitely help in terms of advocacy. And we probably will want something, we probably want more parking facilities when the ridge opens. I think the question is, since the ridge is a 12-month operation, the Forest Service are effectively responsible for that trail, then what advocacy do we get from them to actually do the planning for DOT? Do, at least up to the point?
Yeah, I think that's a good summary. I think the difference of the Crow Pass trailhead, trailhead. Yeah, I think that's a good summary. I think the difference of the Crow Pass Trailhead, Trailhead is inaccessible in the winter. There is no parking.
Yes.
So we get the overflow here. So now what we'll have is a large parking lot and a new bridge. And that parking lot, if it's closed, is in a specific stretch where there is no room for.
Yes, yes.
So it's not only that it needs more parking in the summer, it's water was running.
Yes, it needs winter. Because we have a 12 month bridge, it needs to be winter access, which means that at least the Forest Service would have to park the lot and the neighborhood. I don't think it's reasonable to really to rely on private entities to park and plow it way onto that road. There should at least be some winter maintenance out there.
Yeah. And I wonder if there's other areas where the Forest Service has a trailhead that crosses. I mean, because we're not private property, but we're privately maintained. So we've always tried to wonder if there's another example to look at.
Right. There probably is something else, like.
Yeah.
All right. I just would, I was just in Arizona, in Sedona, and Sedona deals with this problem everywhere. It's they have trailheads within residential areas.
Yeah.
They have buses and and public right of ways that go through neighborhoods to trail access, things like that. So it's very common. But it comes down to parking and how you manage all the parking.
Has there been any discussion for us so far when it comes to the bridge about winter access?
Uh, oh, yes. I mean, we built it for the discussion as if so they can handle winter crossing.
Right.
We know that people are going to go there and even though you put up a fence or a sign, people are going to still cross over it. So it has to have a safe and structure that can take it. So.
But there hasn't been any discussion from the Forest Service explicitly about about parking, road plowing, those sorts of issues. It's just been about the bridge itself.
This is bridge itself.
It'd be nice to move them at some point and have a follow up.
Do you suggest that we would just make that connection ourselves and then maybe report back?
I think we need to, I think that should be part of the discussion about the.
Okay.
Bridge. I think that's, I don't know if you want to write that directly, Kyle, whether we should, we should do it as a Forest Service letter or something.
I'd probably say get a letter together.
Yeah, I think.
Express to you what your point of views are. So it's coming from you and then I can share it with them.
Um, and the other thing I was going to point out as well is these, when we say it's access to federal land, it's also access to past Chugan State Park as well. So it's also state land that the appropriate road gives access to. It's, you know, access to, even even the summer trail we have on Apes, it's, you know, it's California, pretty, it's state. I think Ragertown and Ragertown is state and all of the stuff you get is appropriate if you go westward is state. So it's Chugan State Park as well. So DOT, you know, they're providing access, that road's providing access both to state land and to federal lands, if there's multiple parks. So maybe even the state parks, we should still talk to.
Yeah, you know, the DOT is really get more funding out of them. They have all the equipment and capability to do it.
Kind of things like.
You know, they got snow blowers, they got wings and graders and uh they collect with some chains on, but they just have to go do it.
I remember at one point hearing something about the road structure itself and the size of the shoulders and was a was an issue if they were to accept it.
There'd be, I think if the service area accepted it, because it would be all the DOT owns it now. It's their, it's their land, it's their right of way. Um, but I think if the service area was to take it over, we would want definitely the road to be to standards so that we aren't chasing a problem continuously for the future. So so that would be if that was, that was my recommendation, that DOT was going to pass that ownership, then there should be agreement that the funding is put in place to bring that road up to standard.
It is, I mean, it's, you know, it was never built or designed to be what it is. It was supposed to access the gold. I think up there that it's now a major recreational center.
Correct.
It's still an area, but she was calling us that or something.
Correct. Oh, yeah. It's good. You get into it. It's just like these roads here. Once we start digging into them, it's full of stumps and all kinds of stuff. So.
That's a thing that traffic count. In the recent past.
I think recent past, there definitely was a, I think five years ago or something. I don't know why it was there, but one of those rubber strips.
Right. That might be worth.
Yeah, state, oh, Scott Thomas at this date, if he has it.
We definitely have looked into a few different grants that seem like they are specific for roadways. And because we are at a trailhead numerous, it seems like we're, you know, we're eligible for grant monies. It's it's even if we were to get money to upgrade parts of the road, then it's like, who do we have to do that? And do we have the authority to do that? So it's been even a great area to wonder.
Work with DOT on that.
Exactly.
They would be responsible.
Yeah. So I guess the end part of this conversation is, as we sort of check the boxes of who isn't responsible to help. And if we find at least one person who's ready to to be the umbrella as we apply for federal funding, maybe UCA is is meant to get some federal funding instead of take out of the pot of the Alaska money. But it's like, we want to do that with approval or with recommendation. And if that's not the right way to go, then we don't. But my point is, is if there are, if there is money to access to help deal with some heavy traffic, we're ready to do that. We just don't know that we're, that that's the right force.
Yeah, I think DOT is definitely the, they're definitely the umbrella. Um, and they have all the resources to that federal funding. And they they get all that money each year from the feds, which they only have to match 10% to. And um, you know, and we constantly lobby to get money to like appropriate to to uh like our service area, which usually falls on deaf ears. But um, but right now there's all this capital funding coming in and if you can get with the representatives to push for that money, I think that's a big thing. It's really who screams the loudest that gets the money. So.
Okay, um, we covered, I think we covered the issue of winter, winter maintenance and uh the road itself. Anything else anybody wants to add to the first item? I guess we can cover the joint letter as well. I think we discussed, discussed this a little bit. I think we should definitely write a letter to the Forest Service. Um, addressing the issue of winter access.
Mm hmm.
Um, and you can do that through G B O S, uh, because it's basically a parking one for access. And then I think I agree in a joint letter uh for UCA and G B O S. Uh, talking about with to use and to current problems and listing them and asking for recommendations and suggestions as well.
Do you like us to do a part of that?
No, why don't you? I was going to ask you the rest of the supervisor.
Actually, I'd like to, I'd like to see what you guys wanted to say. Okay.
We can come up like, come up with something where we like to talk to, like, just talk to everybody, throw it out there and see like what the main points are that we can prepare for these for us. I want you to know. Get that to you.
Okay. That should focus on winter.
I think it's definitely, yeah.
I think definitely winter because it's only made up for it. But I think the issue of summer maintenance is also, because as you said, the road is really up to the traffic is taken.
Right.
For two, two way traffic and RVs and and. Yes, that's right. It's effectively one of the pure parking areas in the crookery.
Yeah.
So that encourages others. That's a good point.
But that that also is something that in our Forest Service letter, and this might need to be a separate one, but we we wonder what kind of relationship we need to have with them when we are police. We don't want police fires or human waste, but what's like the best practices to do that? And also, um, it seems like you're supposed to maybe stay for a week or two weeks and then move, but like three people, that's, you know.
Yeah.
And that's a really tough one, too, because the is we talked to the Forest Service and said, well, it's not for the file. No, it's no else.
So that's why I was up there today is see where things were.
Yeah.
Um, trying to figure out where lines were because it's either H L B land or it's DOT right of way land. And so um, thing that struck me, I was like, I had to kind of research just to find out how wide the right of way is for the DOT. Um, because if it's a hundred foot right of way, definitely the two campers we saw today are within the right of way.
Like through the neighbors, through the neighborhood, it's a hundred.
It's a hundred. Okay. So it's a hundred, probably all the way down. So probably then that's where like, okay, DOT, what do you do about this?
Yeah.
You know, and so um, and that's why I went up there with the police just to show them because I said, depending on the owner, the owner's going to make a call as to what they want to do.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, thank you very much. And then it's like a, just like a point to say, it's very understandable that there's no housing and people can't find a place. But, you know, when you leave your home, looking up all winter long where it's getting, you know, your man's getting shot out and now you got bears in your stuff. And now you got, you know, like where it's just, and then also like just the the trash that happens because of that. And yeah, it's just.
Yeah.
It's a reason why I want to stay.
Yes.
It's just interesting that the pullouts that people camp in are not Forest Service.
Now, Forest Service, I don't think really gets the ball passed to your neighbor pastor.
They kind of drive by the trash and drive by the fires.
Yeah.
Okay. So I think we covered one and three. Um, any other comments on the road?
Um, can we get one of those, look at their hands? Can we have that one out there that says extreme? I love that guy's.
Oh, ask Michelle. She probably has one in there.
Because it, because it would be very helpful, even though there's the red sign up there. I stopped a bunch of people and just, you know, like I could say it very nicely, um, just to remind people that there's burn ban. But people don't see, like, they just keep driving by and they don't see it. And it's terrifying to think if something did happen when we had that really dry forest bear a few years ago.
Yeah.
When the neighbors was coming up and they were right on the side, there's like nobody around because they were on this was a huge fire. And if something happened there, we had no way out.
Yeah.
So it's just terrifying. And so just to have a little extra informational under.
Yeah.
Rihanna. When we find the post of page, we can see your handle.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for this discussion. I'm listening really intently and uh I had kind of a random question. I have been in Gerwood, but not for very long. Has the road ever been closed or have the locals uh closed it due to safety at any point? Even if it was not um their call to do? And that's a winter, winter question.
Certainly during the Powers era, they wouldn't always plow it. So it was closed just by nature of the auto vehicles. And I think that was just after the upper mine wasn't paying for it. They were in this transitional phase. And so it was closed definitely for a couple of years, which we always heard about as the worst case scenario, don't I have?
So what you know, I mean.
Yeah.
Right. Well, I just, I recall, of course, this winter, the big sign saying local traffic only and in other states in road um mountain passes, the roads will just be closed. So no one's allowed to, but maybe emergency vehicles or local traffic would be. But I don't know who would enforce that and that would hopefully um help if there was a way to do that.
Well, we certainly talked about the possibility if there was a, you know, if there was a place that was good to put a gate, something along that just for winter. Not prohibit people from coming up, but prohibit vehicles. So it's an option.
DOT might be open to the idea.
Yeah, yeah, we've definitely talked about it, whether it was something that you had to have a code or a key, those details got trickier. Um, you know, you have friends visit, so you want them to come. So the key doesn't work, but there's no electricity. So it has to be a code and then you need a, so we've gotten into these conversations before for sure. I think the toll booth is a good one.
Yeah, I like that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mike, did you call me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. Um, should we mention the parking in that letter? Is that too much at one time or um? And you brought up the point of trash as well, you know, some kind of service at the parking.
We have, we, we, we were discussing two letters. One is to the state, um, which would be primarily about funding. You know, the state of the road in the summer and the winter, winter, winter maintenance status. Um, then there's a separate letter we're going to write to the Forest Service um from G B O S, which will address parking and future, you know, winter use and what their intent is for. Um, for winter use for the bridge, for the new suspension bridge.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay, any other comments on the road topic? If not, we will uh move on to the other topic, which is um UCA representation at M C. So just a context, we had on G B O S officially official tax rates powers moved into the service area that did not up crookery road beyond the uh school bus era. Uh, that does cover the area just to the east. It does cover much of the H L B land up to the hand tram. Um, so for tax rates and powers, G B O S doesn't have a responsibility there, but within the overall community council, M C is responsible for and G B O S has involved it. Uh, our group is included and it's included in the area plan and things that are going on. So um, I think the intention of this was just to uh make sure there's a plan and formal offer. It's uh, you know, you're definitely welcome to M C. And if you want to, if if you want to sort of bring in issues up or, you know, report back or have like a standing item of what's going on. We can, we can encourage M C to do that. More of an open invitation, I think.
That would be having like an actual representative.
Well, I mean, you are really, everyone, everyone in the community is a, just a member on it. So so everyone's, everyone's welcome. I just want to make sure it's.
Yeah.
But we do always welcome, if you want to volunteer to be on this, I can committee, like Kevin McDermott's on it right now, Shannon O'Brien and Diana Stram. And one of them I know is leaving and Diane Powers used to be on it and they just basically helped to run the meeting, but everybody has one person, one vote. So it's all the same, but they just, they're there to make sure the meetings kind of happen in that aspect. And Diane was great when she was there. That's when we, she pursued the money and then she was just real vocal at times to help us understand the crookery.
We're indebted to her and all the ways. When she left, we're all like, oh, my gosh. It was a snowy winter average.
And when are the land use meetings?
Every second Monday at seven. The occasional joint meeting with G B O S here and there.
Second.
Monday.
And they are hybrid now.
They're hybrids. You can be online and join that way, which is nice.
Well, thanks a lot for having us meeting with us and a lot of crookreakers were grateful. They're like, oh, wow. Okay, that sounds cool. They, yeah.
I would say just, it's one of the same. It's not, not going to go away. It's just going to become.
Correct. Yeah.
Just in general, I'd like to say that some of what we say is true for the vast, far part of the village, Timberline Drive, where we have that waterfall. And we have a constant parade going up and down of bus speeders. There's little kids on that road. You know, there's people in the, in the beginning of winter, when people, right before they start going up there, people going into the ditch, we got the ditch diapers.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can only solve it to a certain level and.
We're, we're, we're wholeheartedly supporting your.
Yeah, I just saw that advertised, Virgin Trail somewhere in a, a big, a last.
I was posted on Google, I said waterfall closed or this is the worst, the worst, this is the worst thing I've ever seen. My father.
I would say if I could reroute it, I would. So. Put it in the pipe.
It's a terrible scheme.
I have a.
Access from the top of Max's.
I have a saying in my office. I said, this would be a lot easier if humans were involved. So constant human factor we're dealing with.
Okay, um, we do have a joint meeting with the M C soon. Uh, was there a date fixed?
I don't have it to my head, but I think we're, we're closing. Margaret's working that out. Actually, I can look right here.
Yeah. Well, we're going to be talking about Paul Hills.
I never heard the end of um whether the municipality was going to pay to upgrade the bridge that crosses Crookery. There was like a vote on it at the, the assembly earlier.
There was a, the, there was a, um, this municipality basically sent to request for capital spending to the state.
And we're putting in for the bridge.
That bridge was.
I do not believe that bridge was found.
Yeah. The guardrail like that kind of tore back and the bridge, like we just look at that, right? Probably it is, I don't know. I need to have your super go for it.
I don't have it up here right now.
So obviously that's something else that's of interest, but that's a separate detail.
Right.
But it hasn't been officially noticed yet. Okay. So I think we're done with that. And then two items number, the last item is public comment. Person's offering a public comment, say full name, address, public comments, there were three minutes per person. Must be on subjects not listed on the agenda. Public comments. Guy, is your head up?
Legacy.
Legacy end. Okay, any, any further comments from anybody? If not, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. To adjourn from Jen, second.
I'll second.
Second.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everyone.